I need to gavel. Good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the June 7 Hyde Park Planning Board Regular Meeting. Please note the exits in case of emergency and please join me as we pledge allegiance to our plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are down a couple of people tonight, so we have a nice lean planning board, ready to sit here and do work. The first item on the agenda is Carriage Trails, formerly known as Crofton Muse.
And can you put a microphone?
Sure.
Lou, captain for the advocate.
Before we get going, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Ron? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good evening.
Hi. So, we are seeking an extension of the existing approvals while we refresh some of the state, the DEC and the DOT approvals and a variety of other things that we're just trying to set in place.
Oh, can you make sure that you're speaking into the microphone?
Sorry.
Thank you.
And while we do that, we're seeking an extension, so we at least have our placeholder.
Yes.
Just pull it forward just a little bit.
Does everybody speak into their microphone, please?
Yes. Just pull it in a little bit.
Hello.
Like do that.
Bring it a little bit closer.
Oh, no.
So, that's it. I'm seeking an extension while I work through all the approvals to get them refreshed and re- permitted. And so, that's what I'm here tonight to do.
And we're working through some larger questions and...
We are. And we've basically gone back to the original approvals on many points. We, you know, we were going to attempt to re-renovate the covert bridge, but that didn't, the state didn't appear to like that, nor did the town. So, we're going to put in a span bridge again, the same one that was approved on the original plan. The wetlands have absorbed some more land, so we've, we're knocking out the northeast quadrant, 68 units, so we're down to 249 units, which why I will be in front of the planning board to show the changes. Again, the ones that will remain really don't, aren't changed much at all, but much less units, so less impact. I'm sure the board, or I hope the board will find that all favorable, but I want to get, and I think the board wants me to get, the DEC and DOT approvals back in place before I come to them. So, that's...
Right. And plus, we're trying to balance the fact that this is a very old approval-
Yes.
-prior to the current zoning-
Right.
And so, we're trying to be able to-
Navigate that as well.
...not triggering the new zoning.
Right. We're navigating that. So, I just received from Mr. Dupree some suggestions on how to do that. I will be in touch with Ms. Polidoro about, you know, resolving that.
Okay. So, I'd like to go to our consultants on this one. Nothing from you, Bonnie. What about you, Pete?
Well, just to echo some of the things that Lou talked about, where we had a conference call the other day about the floodplain development permit, and Tad and I are going to be working with him and his, and his consultants and the DEC on defining it. So, you know, he's, you know, like trying. He's moving, he's moving it as fast, as fast as he can, so.
Okay. Ms. Polidoro, do you want to talk a little bit about the, some of the hurdles that we have in front of us?
Right. We have, we have some, a request from the Department of Environmental Conservation regarding SEACRA, and we're waiting for Lou to actually provide us with a copy of DEC's letter, so we can fully understand what DEC's request is. Because if they are just asking if the old SEACRA is good, that's one thing. If they are asking us to renew our SEACRA approval, that's a different can of worms that will be opened, because we have a project that can't be re-approved because it doesn't conform with the zoning. So, we'd have to come up with a solution to get that. So, I don't have it right now, but we'll talk offline about it and...
Right. So, in fact, my, the way I read it, they are asking whether or not the planning board will just say that the older SEACRA will apply here, and there may be additional information that you, you need to confirm that. And I'll work through that with Victoria.
Okay, great. Yeah. We'll look forward to hearing the results of, of your...
I have one more thing, too, when Victoria's done. So, one of the, one of the items that had, had come up was you're proposing more sewage flow through the wastewater treatment plant. So, and I forget where all that was left off. There was a bunch of emails that went back and forth.
Okay. So, the speedies permit actually was for 66,000 gallons under the old approvals. That's what we're asking for now. The DEC doesn't have a problem with it. The reason there seems to be more efficient use now, so we only actually, in this project, plus the fact that we've lost 68 units, we're only going to need 44,000 gallons per day. However, we anticipate that ultimately, there's a 30-acre parcel that would utilize the sewer treatment plant as well. When and if we were, or to seek approval on that, we would already have the ability to handle the sewage.
So, I mean, Lou, that does raise an issue. So, that's why I think we need to understand exactly what the DEC is looking for. Because if we are going to consider a future development of that other lot, then that's a, that's a different SEACRA review, because we can't approve a treatment plant that could potentially serve that lot without doing a review on that lot. Right? It's segmentation.
Okay.
So, I don't know. Can you phase your speedies permit? I think we need to have it offline.
Yeah, we can have a discussion off, offline.
The plant itself is, would need to be, you know, increased, the physical plant, in order to accommodate another development. The speedies permit is all that we're seeking for, for the potential. This is a new wrinkle. I'll deal with it.
Well, again, I think-
I think we can get through it, but I mean, if, if there's...
It just needs to be mapped out, so that everything is-
Okay.
-clear.
Okay, thanks.
Are any more comments over there? I see Tad came in, but I don't see her.
I don't see Tad.
She's getting a chair.
Okay. Let me check with my colleagues in the meantime, and we'll come back to Tad. Mr. Veeth, do you have any comments on this?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Waters?
Not at this time.
Mr. Oliver?
Not at this time.
Mr. Garcia?
Not at this time.
It's a lot of legalese talk and...
My apologies.
That's quite all right.
I mean, part of the struggle is that we're dealing with a plan that could not be approved under today's zoning, and the board is not legally allowed to make any modifications to that plan. Otherwise, the whole plan has to comply with the current zoning. So, in the absence of, like, a zoning amendment, or an overlay, in the absence of anything creating a carve-out for this project, we're all trying to jump through these legal hoops to, to keep the project moving.
And there are a number of them, because when you start to balance the requirements of SEACRA with the actual land and how you, you're proposing to use it-
Right.
-and take into account zoning changes, it gets complicated.
Well, I do appreciate the effort that the board is going through. I know the effort I'm putting in, and for you to review it is no simple task. Needless to say, I'm exhausted, but I know that your, that your efforts are appreciated.
Victoria?
Yes?
I have a quick question. If he, it sounds to me like he wants to prep for the future, right? What's the disadvantage of doing that? Like, I don't understand.
So, I mean, SEACRA envisions that we review all portions of an action at the same time. And so, from our perspective, it's great to look forward to the future, but that means we would want him to come forward with some kind of sketch plan for what that 30-acre lot would be like. If, if you're approving the sewer-
Well, what if he just came in and said, "I want the full 60,000," which was approved for, and he didn't have a lot? Like, he wanted to build a plant that could accommodate 60,000 gallons of sewage.
So, we normally, you'd, you'd never approve a sewage plant without, because it has a growth-inducing aspect to it. You wouldn't just approve a sewer plant without understanding all the possibilities that it could serve. So, because once you build the plant, you're, it's much easier to get a development. It, it causes people to come in and build.
But then he could supply su, access to outside lying development for sewer, right? Wouldn't that be a positive?
It, it would be. But it's not my law. It's the state law that says we're supposed to look at the package.
No, no, I'm not. I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. I, I don't think it's a value judgment of whether it's good or bad. It's just simply from a regulatory perspective, with the additional capacity, you have to consider what growth you're inducing. So, you know, what effect it may have. So-
To your point, though, I'm actually not building a plant that will accommodate-
Right.
-future development. I'm building a plant that will accommodate what I'm seeking to build right now. What I am asking for from DEC, and I didn't think they had a problem with it, but I, maybe it is, is merely to have the permit-
Right.
-for the sewer treatment plant only, for the potential. And all I used was a zoning as it exists today. I'm not looking to submit anything to the town on how I would develop, if I would develop those 30 acres. However, the maximum amount of development I would allow right now, at 40 acres, 30 acres, do the math, 120 units, that's another 22,000 gallons. So, I was seeking to just merely have that one permit in place for potential.
Right.
If that's a problem, I'll go back to 44. I don't care.
Well, I mean, one of the, again, we, we'll have a different discussion, but just quickly is, you're not going to, even if they give you the speedies permit for the 66, you're not going to build a plant that's going to-
No.
-break out the bat. So-
No. It wouldn't work. It wouldn't work right now.
Right. So, you're probably going to have, you know, like, modules-
Correct. And add tanks.
-that you can add, like, modules, because, you know, as you know, you don't want a 60,000 gallon a day plant, and you're only flowing 30,000, because then it's not going to have the capacity to treat it, right?
Right. This is really about the paperwork. However-
It's just paperwork. So, I think we can get through it where it's not going to create an issue. So-
Thank you.
But we wanted to at least bring it- Again, it comes with a meeting of the minds of getting all the details.
But we wanted to just bring it up so that it's out there for everybody, both. I think we can get through it.
Okay.
Okay.
Tad, did you have any comments on this? Okay. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this application? Okay. So, if there are no comments, I'm going to put this, we'd like to consider adjourning this to July 19th.
Say that again.
Adjourning to July 19th.
Oh, for a vote. Okay. All right.
And assuming that you will be meeting offline to work through these very simple issues that just-
Sure. Teach your cake.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ron. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're into continued public hearings now. Bellfield, PUD Phase II subdivision. Good evening, Larry.
Good evening. We, earlier this week-
One moment. Can I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, all set?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you. Larry Boudreau with Bellfield. We, earlier this week, we submitted a request to adjourn this until the 19th.
Yep.
I'm sorry. I want to make sure I got the right date.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay, so there's no-
And I'm here if there's any questions.
Okay. I'll ask my consultants.
No questions, thank you.
Pete?
No.
Victoria?
Nope.
Any comments up here on the phase?
Nope.
Is there any public comment on this? Okay. Can I get a motion to please adjourn this to July 19th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
You're adjourned to the 19th.
Thank you.
Yep. Next item on the agenda, Hyde Park Town Center. Hyde Park Town Center North. Ready Coffee.
Joe, how you doing?
I brought a few friends.
I see that. Welcome. Oh, haven't seen you in a while.
I know that we said the band's back.
Yeah.
So, Kelly Leibel with KRC Planning Consultants.
Michael Berta, architect for the project.
Burger, burger engineer.
We previously appeared before this planning board, and at that meeting, if everyone remembers, we went at great length to discuss modifications to the site layout, particularly with respect to the traffic configuration, the location of parking spaces, to some degree, the architecture, some discussion about the compliance with the new zoning. And so, we did provide you with a new submission. We addressed all of the comments. You know, we always provide the comment with the narrative. Some of the items that were addressed in there had to do, the clarification of the architecture. We've been working very closely with your consultants and with Tad. Thank you on trying to clarify the new zoning. You know, this is the first application on the new zoning.
The first one through.
We added more signage and striping circulation, you know, to clarify the channelization and the circulation. We modified the lighting. We provided photos of the dumpster at another location, because there was a discussion about what the dumpster would look like. Along those lines, we also added significant landscaping around the dumpster enclosure. So, that's really the only change on the landscaping plans that you would have seen. We provided you with the approval letter from TEG, saying that they approved the improvements that are on the site and on their property. We continue to work with your attorney, with Victoria, on a reciprocal access easement, so the two attorneys are working together. And not on the plans, but in the last few days, there's been some offline discussions about adding some tables outside on the patio that we're going to reconstruct. And I think there was a meeting with the Health Department wherein he, he being Jason Teed from the Health Department, clarified a statement that was made at the last planning board meeting, where it was stated that if we provided tables, it would trigger the Health Department approval. And so, that statement was incorrect. And so, the Health Department fortunately helped clarify that. And although not on the plans, we are in agreement to add two tables. We think that we can fit two tables, similar to the ones that are at the Ready Coffee in La Grange, so we can add those to the site. Joe Berger is here, because he's working closely with the Department of Health and submitting that application. And so, he's including those two tables, because that has to go into consideration on the design of the septic system. So, he's here as well, in case we have any questions about that. So, this project has taken a lot of twists and turns, just as far as remaining action items, so we can keep ourselves focused, is, we did receive comments from county planning, so we're here tonight to discuss those. I think that can be a pretty brief discussion. And then, also to set the public hearing for this project. So, those are the remaining action items to keep this project moving forward.
I believe we're in public hearing, so-
Oh, I thought we had to schedule. Okay, sorry.
Can I actually get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Ta-da. One was done. Check. Okay. So, would you like me to address the county comments, or do you want to go around the board and-
I, no, I think that would be great, if you could.
Okay. So, we did receive them today, so we just wanted to try to respond quickly. Without going through each of the comments that they had raised, I just thought the best thing is perhaps, for purposes of time, because you do have a long agenda, is just to go to the end, which were the recommendations. And so, the county went to great length to go through their review of the new zoning code and the consistency of the project with the new zoning code.
Again, it's the first project through with the new-
Correct. Yeah. So, I'm going to try to talk louder, because the air conditioning's on. So, there were four recommendations at the end, and so, this board, if you disagree with one or any of them, would require a supermajority. So, I think it's important to just go through those. So, the first requirement or recommendation that they had is that the building should be modified to more closely uphold the intent and requirements of the town core district, as outlined in the design standards. And up above in the letter, she references the fact that this should probably be a two-story storefront. And I think that this board has gone to great length to talk about this one-story storefront, which is permitted. And, you know, we've spent enormous amount of time on this design, so we are not in a position to modify the design at this time, nor do we think that it's warranted. Her second comment had to do with the entrance-only curb cut north of the building should be removed, or a reduction in the width and a curb radius to change that to satisfy this condition. And so, our position is that this ingress, which is, we call it the slip-in, I think commonly amongst ourselves, which is predominantly for the bank, has been there for decades. There's been lots of discussion with this board and the consultants about not modifying that and not making any changes to it. We've worked with your traffic consultant, our traffic consultant, and Pete's office to come up with some striping changes in that particular area. So, it's not our position at this point to make any changes to that ingress-segress, nor do we think that it's warranted at this point. The third one is that the required street trees should be added between Route 9 and the proposed building. And we've talked a lot about trees in that particular area, and we're not in a position right now to add street trees back to the plan. So, there were street trees there before. I think the town just went through and instituted a whole sidewalk plan, and most of those trees were removed. We don't think that it's the applicant's responsibility to put those trees back. We do have a very extensive landscaping plan on our property. We have added a tremendous amount of-
Okay, I had a couple.
Because of the, right, because of the septic system.
And there's some septic, right. You were going to say about septic, right?
I was going to get to that, darn it.
Well, the engineers had to feel like they had to jump in or say something.
All right. So, we'll nip that one in the bud. So-
I was going to ask about the septic.
We can't put them in there because of the septic system. We also don't think that, since they were removed, we should add it back in. And then, the lighting levels, fixture locations, and fixture specifications should be modified. I, I think we did that. They may have missed in the interpreter, or missed in the plan, but-
There are a couple hotspots that are a little bit, a little bit exceeding, so we're going to work with that.
So, we'll revisit that.
You could share the pass-around microphone, too, that's there, if you want, just to help.
So, so those are the four comments, unless anyone has anything here that they want to add. But, so we, we, other than the lighting, object and resist the recommendations. And I, I don't want to say resist and object. I think that much of the discussion that we've had at this board over the last many months never gets a chance to kind of catch up with county planning. And so, they objectively review the, the plan, and they provide you with their recommendations, but a lot of these have been discussed already with this board.
Well, we also waited until we had gone through many of the-
Correct.
-iterations of, of traffic flow and, and all of that before we even-
Sent it to them.
Sent it off, just so that we could try to minimize the number of comments that they might have. So, I'm, I'm actually pleasant, I'm pleasantly surprised that we got it down to four.
Yes.
It's not too bad. And again, first time through, and they're looking at the, the letter of the code.
Right. And we can provide, you know, we just wanted to have that narrative with you tonight. We can provide a response to this as part of the next submission.
We're going to, we're definitely going to need that.
Yes.
But we're, we'll probably also talk about this a little bit.
Absolutely.
Okay. Did you want to talk about the changes that you have made to the lighting?
Yeah. Excuse me. Well, we, we actually had gone through and updated the majority of the lighting. And I will say, there were a couple spots that were missed. And so, there's, there's two spots on the lighting plan that are hotspots. Excuse me. Allergies today, that we're going to have to take care of. But the rest of the, the site that we've adjusted it and gotten it down below, we've really lowered the foot candles. But for whatever reason, there were two spots that, that became hotspots that we have to adjust.
Okay.
We're, we're aware of it now, and we're going to take care of it. Probably have to remove a fixture. Now, it's, it's at the southwest corner of the building, and there's two fixtures. There's fixture on each corner, and it's probably, they're competing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, we're going to need to remove one of them, and in order to get the foot handles down, which is not a problem. And the other one, quite honestly, I don't understand why it's a hotspot, because it's only, it's only a single wall sconce. And there's no reason for it. So, I think it was a mistake on the lighting.
Like, maybe when they plugged it in, they plugged the street lamp instead of the-
I, I think so, because it's, it happens to be on the northeast corner on the canopy, on one of the brick piers, one of the columns that's supporting the canopy, right in that top corner. And that's one of the hotspots, and it just doesn't make any sense to me. Because there's, other than, other than, you know, a gooseneck way up high, all we have there is one wall sconce. And it's, you know, the, the pole lights are a good 15 feet away. So, that hotspot just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
So, it's the one in the southeast corner, or southwest corner, that we have to, we need to adjust. Other than that, the rest of the lighting, it's complies. We're down to, I think, somewhere between one to two foot candles on average.
So, that, that sounds like it complies with number four, where they're looking to more evenly.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one on the southwest corner had 32-foot candles. It just, it doesn't match any of the other numbers. So, that was a misprint.
Yeah. It, well, we, we do have a wall sconce on each corner, so I'm sure it's a little, we need to, we're going to eliminate one of the wall sconces, and then the one on the, the southeast corner, we'll just slide it over more to the middle.
I, I think the point is, is that this is an easily-
Right.
Amendable, fixable. Yeah.
Right. We're now, we're now fine-tuning-
Correct.
-that, now that we've gotten the, the overall circulation and some of these other ideas.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the rest of the site, we've gotten it down to comply, I believe. Yeah.
Still a lot of, still a lot of kind of moving parts, but there's, there's really, they're really starting to come in together.
Correct. Yeah.
The list is shrinking.
Yes.
Do you have anything more that you'd like to-
That is it. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to come over to our consultants.
Sure. So, we did prepare a memo, and really, some of the items just need to be confirmed by the planning board at, at this point. They're not necessarily our comments, except for the lighting, which we did note as well. One is the parking and the circulation. Kelly did speak to it, but at the pre-meeting, there was some discussion still about the four parking spaces, which was raised by the county. So, I think that's something that the planning board has to get consensus on in terms of those parking spaces.
And we're talking about the four that are on the north side, right?
Yes, as you come in through that northerly drive. Kelly did touch upon the outdoor seating, so that's been addressed. And just the windows and doors to, to put a spec or to understand if it's opaque, is it opaque, sort of what are you going to do there? And the door, it's not just going to be a gray door, painted door, some color to that exit door, where they come out to take the orders. You addressed street trees. The wall, I think it showed a concrete core for the wall. Is that what's there now, or is it a different construction?
Yes. Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay. So, it's just matching up the construction that's already there.
Exactly. Yeah.
And same thing as far as the lighting, Kelvin values, and again, county mentioned this already, 2,700 to 3,000. In the lighting schedule, some of the fixtures aren't matching the details, and I noted where they don't. I don't think we had a pole detail. One of the lantern item numbers don't match. Make sure the concrete bases are colorized, like the existing poles are in the shopping center. And the same thing, southwest corner, light levels were approaching 26 and a half to 36.1 foot handles. Northwest, it was 15.9. And then, at that pass-through aisle, and that's where you're saying it may be some air, it's like 52.7, which is very odd.
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it makes no sense to me. If you look right next to it, I think it's, I think it's three.
Right. So, so, I think it's an error there. There was another one, 36.2, right in that same area. So, something's going on there. So, I'm sure you'll check it out. But again, I think it's just more a matter of, you know, are you kind of okay and have consensus on the dumpster appearance, the four parking spaces, and I think the other items Kelly addressed already.
Right. I mean, I'll, I'll let my colleagues weigh in, but I, I know that I have heard that the four parking spaces are still of concern, especially that, the one that's all the way to the west, and that there's still, some people still believe that that's going to be a conflict point and a potential safety issue. So, but I, you know, I will let-
We did remove one, just as, I think there was one space that was moved. Yep. And then we added that curb on the westerly side, really to channelize-
The curb is wider, right?
Yeah. Yep. To give, well, we added a, like, a landscaped island at the end of those spaces, just to provide protection for those cars that are sitting there, and really to channelize the drivers. You know, we feel pretty strongly that those spaces are important to the, the operation of the business, particularly when you have people who are walking up. That's kind of a relief valve for the drive-through, is that- That's kind of a relief valve for the drive-through, is that, you know, Ready Coffee does have that walk-up window, and we, of course, want to encourage that. We maintain, you know, I'd said this at the last meeting, that we don't really view those parking spaces and any of the turning movements and so forth that are there, that are really any different than any other parking aisle. I understand that it's by the slip-through where people are coming in, but it's not any different than if someone was into the site, and they wanted to go out to Pine Woods, and, you know, they're going down one of the drive aisles. And actually, it's identical. I just went over to the site today, and I just wanted to make sure I said this with factual statement, is that it's identical to the parking spaces that you see across from McDonald's. So, you have that little plaza that's there, and people come in off of Route 9, probably a little faster where you would come in at this site, and everyone backs into people coming in and making some turning movements into McDonald's. So, it's not any different than that, and I don't think we've seen any significant accidents and so forth at that location. So, we, we really feel strongly about that. I thought that we had gone through this at the last meeting, and everyone, maybe there was an outlier here or there, but there was the consensus that the four spaces, I wasn't pointing at you, Rob. There was consensus from the rest of the board that the four was reasonable, you know, at that point. So, we're, we're gonna ask to keep those.
Right. I, I do bring it up just because I, I know that when it comes to, like, us potential safety issues, that, that's something that we really need to take seriously and make sure that we've exhausted it.
I agree. And I, I thought that when Brandon was here last month, that we agreed that the, at, the addition of the curb, the landscaped island, and then the reduction of the one space was satisfied his concerns. So, I'll have to go back and look at the...
My notes say three spaces is what a majority of the board convened on. But, there was a lot of different opinions. I said, my notes indicate a majority said three, but there were a lot of different voices.
That's why I'm kinda bringing it up, yeah. So...
Okay.
Mr. Sotero?
No, I don't have anything. All our prior comments were addressed.
Thank you. Ms. Polidaro?
I think, you know, there are still some outstanding issues. Kelly addressed them. One thing that does need to be confirmed is that whether or not they need variances. And I think we've gotten to a point, can we safely say no?
I, I will ask Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Pete.
I believe we've gotten to the point where, just on the illustration, the measurement at the service window to the ground was to be 30 inches, and it shows 30 inches, but then the detail looks like it's still siding. So, I think that's the only thing that's left.
So, just a clarification, yeah, so we can...
It is glass underneath that. It's just, I think in the illustration, it just doesn't, but the service window by 88 has to be 36.
So, we'll, we'll... So, it's below the, the shelf?
Yeah, we'll have glass underneath the shelf.
Yeah. So, we'll clarify that detail, because I don't want it, no pun intended, but we want it to be crystal clear. So, we'll fix that detail, so it's crystal clear. Okay.
That's good. Thank you.
So, no barriers.
And, so that was the only potential one?
Big issue resolved.
Okay, that's great.
And then, you know, we're still waiting on the access easement from TEG and other things, but...
Right.
And then, I mean, I, I think Kelly did a good job of explaining the county planning comments, but just so everyone on the board understands, this application, in its current iteration, will now take a supermajority board to affirmatively vote yes, to approve it. So, that's five out of seven votes.
Five. Yep. So, for example, if tonight we were to make the vote, it would have to be unanimous of this board, because it's a supermajority of the entire board, not just of what the quorum is when they show up.
The board that's constituted.
Right. Just make sure that's clear. Thank you so much for clarifying that. Mr. Veeth, do you have any comments?
I was just wondering if anybody had a sidewalk plan for the DOT of the, what they're doing now for plantings and trees.
I don't have that.
Uh, we have one, but not here.
Are they gonna put trees back, Pete?
I don't remember, to be honest with you, right there. I, I don't know. I, I can answer that, you know, tomorrow, but not now.
And I think the rest of the things Kelly explained to me, I'm, I'm good with everything else.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Waters?
Yes, I, just, south elevation, the plan I'm on is...
You see May 25th?
May 25th, that's current, right?
Yep.
So, the hatch on the south elevation, all the way to the left, there's a hatch of the brick. I think that's supposed to be on the overhang.
Oh.
Oh.
What is that?
Are you seeing that?
You're talking about this piece over here?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's... I think what it did is it just didn't mirror image over.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's just a little...
Yeah, it's supposed to be in the column.
Yeah.
And, and the same on the, against the building, that hatch is missing.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so that was that.
I, I think we may have left the hatch out, only because it's so far back.
Okay, that's fine. And just, just, just to bring it to the attention, will, will the tables have umbrellas, or?
No.
No, just, just...
Yeah, we find those to be...
So, you'll just wait until, if the tree's gone, there'll be shade for people?
I don't think there's gonna be trees that are gonna be planted there. So, there'll be, there'll be tables.
Okay, I don't think the DOT has...
Well, there's septic, at least where we are, there's septic system.
I mean, if they were gonna be, if, I'm sorry, if the DOT's gonna plant trees, they're gonna be, I don't remember if there's a...
There's too much concrete right there.
Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna be, they're not, they're not gonna be helpful to, you know, the tables.
And there's no...
And then I, I see the, the two-foot-six on the windows. Thank you for doing that. And thank you for the measurements, too. That's helpful. Uh, the bollard, I know you have the detail in here, but it's not, I don't, it's not represented on, on the drawing.
In plan, where the bollards are?
Yeah, yeah. I think there's gonna be one in front of that post, probably.
Who was supposed to be here?
In front of the column.
That's the post on the, the overhang?
Yeah, on the overhang, the drive-through.
Okay.
Bollard, yeah.
Yep.
They're supposed to be bollards, but they're worried about someone hitting the column at the last meeting, yeah.
Right.
Yes, understood.
Just so we see that. And then, not, not that it matters, 'cause I understand with the leaders coming down in the drawing, after looking at the drawing, just the gutters aren't called out on some of the, on some of the runs. So, you know, you have the face, you have face it, the beat, beats off it. It's kinda redundant anyway, because, but, but there are leaders coming down the building, but the gutter isn't called out. That's just minor stuff.
Actually, it, it is, it's just unfortunately, in the color, if you look at the black and white, if you look at the other one here, the black and white copy, you'll be able to see it. It's called out on the canopy, on the...
On the north elevation, you'll see it called out? Yeah, on the north. On the south, it isn't, though, I believe. On the south elevation?
Yep, we can add...
I know it's there, but it's, 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 just, just to bring it to your attention.
No problem.
Um, I think that was, let's see, that's it, that's it, just where the gutters were. That was, that was it with that. And then, my, my other issue is still with the parking spaces, the floor. Because of the location, I believe of the dumpster, or, get to that. The dumpster could create a blind spot for traffic coming in, you know, coming, passing through. So, I was saying that if, if it did go to three spaces, that they could be centered in the four-space spot, and it would give you more visibility around that, the proposed dumpster area. Because sight-wise, when you're backing out, you're gonna have a high wall there. If, if you pull into that, that easterly space, and, and that's, that walkway is, I think it's five feet, not, not six, you know, not six.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at that. That's a question.
If you could just look at it, and that, that would just, I think if that was centered, then I think I'd be okay with it. It, it just creates a blind spot.
Could you say that louder in the microphone, please?
You know, like I said, you've been, we've been working it, working it, working it, working it, and it looks, we're getting closer and closer. So, I'm, I'm happier.
Thank you.
So, that's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, thank you for going through that, the detail. It never hurts to have the set of eyes on those drawings.
Agreed. Agreed. We've looked at it so many times.
Right, right. Thank you very much. Mr. Oliver?
So, I'm actually in favor of the four spots. I had brought it up at the last time we reviewed this, only because our traffic consultant had said that, given the way everything was laid out with the additional curb, he didn't see it being a major issue. And as the site continues to grow, and the buildings continue to get renovated, and tenants, you know, move in, the site is going to become more occupied and more parking. And we're not just looking at Ready Coffee, we're looking at the whole site. And the other thing to be mindful of is as this turns into a, you know, a park-like area around Ready Coffee with the, the town center, you know, events like parades and, and maybe other things that will come, people are gonna go there to park, because they're gonna watch that spot right there where the new sidewalk is, grass and park. So, in my opinion, those extra parking spots, you know, they don't, they don't really scare me, because it's still less than was there, you know, and, and as we go forward, there's gonna be more renovations, and more tenants, and more traffic. So, you know, that's, that's my comment on that. Regarding everything else, I'm just really happy that you guys continue to make the changes that are needed and, and work with us. And overall, I think we're making a better project, and I'm excited for it to come to Hyde Park. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Gercio?
I mean, I think everything's been pretty much covered already. I'm for Ready Coffee to be in Hyde Park, and I'm fine with the four spaces. I think they're needed, and I don't think it's really fair to ask you to put trees back that somebody else cut down, maybe three weeks ago. And I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
I think it's important. As like Chris said, I echo Chris's comments. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gercio. So, you've heard from the members that are here. One of the items we have not talked about is the six-foot sidewalks required, and that it is possible to, and Victoria, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is possible to request a waiver for that. So, I think that just needs to be part of the written record.
Correct. Okay, we'll make sure that that's in the letter.
Okay. My comments are, I'm just thrilled that we will be adding some tables. Again, if you're, if you're new to Hyde Park, or even if you're not, to drive by in the area and to see it bustling, and people sitting there, and enjoying themselves, you know, on a beautiful spring day, or, you know, whatever, I think that, that's what we're all trying to have here.
Agreed.
You know, we can't pick who comes here. And so, as businesses raise their hand and say, "We'd like to come to Hyde Park," you know, we, we try to work with you to make it the best possible project. And it's just amazing what, having a couple of tables like that, just, I was like, yay!
Make a big difference.
When I saw everything go back and forth to understand the legalities, you know, the requirements of Department of Health, and, you know, all of these agencies, and to find out that we could actually have some. So...
It was perfect that Jason was here, talking about another project. So, that worked out well.
Yes, yeah. Sometimes things do just actually work out nicely. So, I'm just thrilled about the two tables. I do appreciate the Dutchess County planning comments. I, I do believe they gave this a really good, hard look. You know, unfortunately, when they talk about the building being modified, that was one of the first things that we tackled here, was what was the building gonna look like? And that was months and months and months ago. So, it's kind, you know, we weigh, right? It's like, do we send them the earliest ones?
Yeah.
You know?
And the whole record. I mean, you would have to give them eight months' worth of meeting minutes and so forth.
Right. Or do we, do we send it off first thing, and then, and then get embroiled with, you know, lists and lists and lists and lists of everything that needs to be. So, it's kind of a trade-off, and I do feel kinda bad that they're kinda looking at this with fresh eyes for the first time after we've done a lot of work collaboratively to try to make it look as good as it possibly can. As far as the entrance-only curb cut, again, that's been there forever. You know, I am, I do have my concerns, just because I, every night I drive by, and there's a car parked in that, because they're going to the ATM. So, I, I do have my concerns, but I also feel that people will learn and, and go, "Maybe I shouldn't park there anymore."
Especially when there's parking spaces.
'Cause it's kinda a road.
Yes, yes.
But, I do get that. But, we never had anything before us that said that that would actually make a better project. So, I, again, I appreciate all that. And just one question I do have about the street, street trees, and not even necessarily street trees, but the plantings, is there anything that will give some kind of a shade any, at any time?
I think there's one tree that was planted on the corner of the parking area.
Is that the one closest to, like, to the, to the road?
Yeah, there was one tree that was put in on the north, or, it's on the, hold on, let me just open the landscape.
Oh, it's on the north side, like where that, that planting bed is?
We added it. We added it at the last meeting. That was the one that Michael said, "Oh, I was so happy that you added a tree." So, there was one that was added there. Yeah.
Okay.
But, because of the infrastructure that's there, unfortunately, we won't be able to add anything else.
Right, understood. I just wanted to make sure that we, we clarify all of that. So, we have discussed a lot of things here. So, we're looking to adjourn the public hearing. It's July 19th?
We were actually hoping to come back at the second meeting in June, so that we could try to wrap up, provide you with all of the comments, really just responses to the county, and to try to wrap this up. It's just unfortunate that there's only one meeting in July, so we're really trying to chase the June agenda.
Yeah, it's either in two weeks or...
Two weeks, yeah. So, it's either two weeks or, yeah. So, we're hoping that we could move this to June 21st, and perhaps we could come to closure on some of these final issues, and perhaps, you know, seek a determination from this board.
Okay, I'm fine with that. We also, we'll be making a couple of motions. Alright, so anyway, let's adjourn, can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing to June 21st, 2023?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, can I get a motion to send a courtesy referral of the Hyde Park Town Center North Ready Coffee application to the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, just so they have it on their records?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that's just courtesy. We're not, no clocks are ticking, or, but they will have the set of plans. And...
Anne?
Yes.
Can I just, for the record, can we just confirm there's no one here that wants to speak at this public hearing, which is now open until June 21st?
Yes. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak? Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Awesome. So, did we do all that? Yes, so they've adjourned, we've motioned to refer. I think that's it.
Yep.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Renaissance Rehabilitation and Nursing Home Center for site plan approval for the exterior modifications. You're Chris, right?
Correct, yes.
I have a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So, there was a lot of information at our last meeting. I know you have been very busy. Perhaps you can give us an update on, on what you've been doing?
Yes, so, from the last, from the public hearing, we had a comment from the neighbor about a light that was shining into their house. So, we went out to the site and evaluated it, and it was, so we are proposing to remove, remove the light. And for security reasons in the parking lot, we're going to, we're proposing to add four lights for that front parking spot with all downlit, so that way, the, the light, you know, the parking lot is lit at night, just in case anybody's there, you know, and comes out after dark.
And those are replacement to the lights that are already there?
There are no lights.
There are lights in that parking lot.
So, in the parking lot, there is one there that is being removed and relocated. And then, you have that one on the pole that's a little ways back in between the parking lot and the, the building itself, which we are removing.
The pole you're removing, or the light?
Just the light, as of now. I, I'm not quite sure, besides the light, what use of that pole, but... I, I'm not quite sure besides the light, what use of that pole, but as of right now, we're just removing the light.
Which is, which is good, yes. Yeah, I was there last night and I couldn't, I was like looking all over for the other light and only saw that one big pole with the big...
Maybe they turned it off. There was a very bright one in the parking lot.
I drove up and right after that last meeting, that light was pretty obnoxious.
Yeah, but I didn't see another pole. Is that the only pole in there?
So, yeah, that front parking lot only has that one pole.
Okay, thank you.
That's kind of tucked into the woods a little bit.
Yeah.
On, on the north end of that parking lot, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to see, but we are removing that and going to replace with two on that side instead of just the one.
So now there's like a ring, there's a ring of four, right, around that parking lot?
Uh, there's two on the north side of that parking lot and then there's going to be two on the south side of the parking lot.
Right.
And the two on the south side is also going to get an additional two lights to light the driveway itself, because there is no light on that, on that entryway. So we just want to make sure there's some light to, to, for the driveway.
Okay. Well, that's a lot.
There's that pole light that's in, on a mound, it's pretty high up. I think that was put in to probably light the whole area at one time.
Correct, yeah.
Because it looks really old. The other one looks like it's put up with two-by-fours. The one that's shining in the person's house.
Yeah, so we are removing, like I said, we are removing, you know, the lights and there was a light at top of the building that is, hasn't been worked, hasn't worked according to the owner in years that we are removing anyway.
Is that like up on the corner?
Yeah, correct, yeah. We're, we're removing that anyway, just seeing as how it hasn't worked and, and we're replacing it, yeah.
And then you've also been doing some other work? You've, some of the other comments that were brought up, I, I noticed that there's now area laid out for contractor parking?
Correct, yes. The, the neighbor asked if we could show on our drawings, area for the contractors to park and we designated a front parking, right in front of the building, just to the left of the entrance, parking for the construction workers, big enough for two vehicles to fit. Theoretically, they're probably not going to have any more than two, but, I mean, we can address, if they need to park somewhere else, we could put them in the lower lot if necessary.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. I'm going to go to our consultants. Victoria?
We have a resolution prepared tonight with a few conditions, just to clean up the plans. But, you know, from our perspective, we have our referral to county planning, you have your public hearing and all legal issues been addressed.
Right, right, so there's no outstanding items. Okay. I'm going to start to my right. I know you've already had some comments.
I'm sorry, I, because I just drove up there and I looked at it.
Mm-hmm.
Really, I mean, you're addressing everything, so there's really no comments.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for considering the neighbor's comments. You know, it's always nice to be a good neighbor and we appreciate that, so thank you.
Rob?
Yep, thank you for your findings. Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mr. Roberts. Both lighting issues and the contractor parking overflow for handling that and everything else looks in line, so thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Would anybody from the public like to speak to this application? No? Okay. I think the only other item, I'm not sure if it was in a memo, but the, the bases of the poles need to be painted black?
Yes.
Instead of just being concrete?
Understood, yes. I'll make sure that's on the drawings.
Okay, great. Other than that, I think we have a resolution prepared and I think we can close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And this one goes to Vice Chair Oliver.
Resolution to grant site plan approval, Renaissance Rehabilitation and Nursing Home Center, exterior modification, resolution number 2023-18A, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the board has considered the request for waivers and has determined that such information is not necessary for the review of this project. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan set and authorizes the chair or is authorized designate to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of sheet C301, diagram 34, to include a note that the light base will be painted black. Three, revisions of sheet C200 to include a notation that are, that the four proposed light poles in the eastern parking lot will replace the existing light poles and existing light pole in between the eastern side of the building and the parking lot will be removed. Four, provision of the spec sheets for replacement of light fixtures with shielding as approved by the zoning administrator. Five, revision of sheet C200 to amend notation to add the word temporary to construction vehicle parking area.
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for making the building a lot prettier and nicer and can't wait to see it all completed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are we doing with this project?
I think pretty well.
We've come a long way, right? There's been a lot of questions, but a lot of activity. Can I get a, have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Any updates you'd like to let us know? I know there's been a flurry of emails, documents.
Well, let's see, one of the things, I think the planning board got a letter from the CAC.
Yes.
Which I responded to. I don't know whether you want to go over that.
Sure, why not?
As I remember it, there were, there were several comments. One was about the, oh, hiring a biologist.
Right.
Really don't think that's necessary since we're not disturbing any habitat that hasn't already been disturbed since 1980. Maybe you could help me out because I didn't bring it with me tonight.
Yeah, I don't actually have it in front of me either, sorry.
Hmm.
But if I remember correctly, almost every, actually everything on there had been addressed
Yeah.
With your comments, but also it's a previously disturbed site.
Right.
This board had actually worked through some of those, like, who has authorities and who...
Right.
Are there any...
I think one of the, one of the other things that, I think it was well-intended, but, the letter, but I think there was kind of a lack of understanding of like how boats navigate the Hudson River at night. So I think I...
These things are always a learning experience.
People that are under the influence of alcohol can go up on the ro, I mean, I've seen boats go up on docks.
Oh, yeah.
Down at Rogers Point. But usually the, anybody that has a wherewithal and is sober will follow the, the Coast Guard lights, which, there's one on East Opus Island, there's one down by Rogers Point, you line up in between the two of them and head north or south and you're not going to hit anything because they're for ships.
Right.
So I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Yes, no, I, I thought that the detailed response was...
Okay.
Was good. Now, again, there's been a little flurry of activity with emails today, back and forth, to make sure that we had all the proper documentation.
I think it's been, I think it's all been taken care of.
I know when I came in, the last of the...
There was, there was a plan sheet that the planning board did not receive.
Oh, okay.
So the planning board has now received it.
Okay.
So we've updated the resolution to address that.
That's it. Okay. So I'm going to start with our consultants. Ms. Franzen?
No comments, thank you.
No comments?
Nope.
Mr. Sotero, nothing?
Nope.
Ms. Palladaro?
Nope.
Tad, any comments? Pete, can you hold that for her?
The only comments are that the, the erosion sediment control permit and the flood development permit are ministerial and they are not necessary to be part of your resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, any comments on this application?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Mr. Waters?
No comment.
Mr. Veeth?
Good job, no comment.
I know, I'm looking forward to seeing what, how this comes through and transpires.
For grasses, me too.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this application? If not, we do have a resolution prepared for tonight.
But wait, we don't use the one in the agenda.
Right, who has this one?
I have it.
Okay, oh, so you have the most updated one, right? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Then I think you are free to go with this.
Resolution to grant site plan approval, Markows and Chalk Residence, resolution 2023-16A, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the board has considered the request for waivers and has determined that such information is not necessary for the review of this project. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan and authorizes the chair or his authorized designate designate to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. Number one, payment of all fees and escrow.
Oh, second.
There should be a...
I'm sorry, Rob.
No, there's one more.
Yeah, it was just the one.
No, it's just the one, they took off.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That was the change.
Thank you. And you're seconding.
Yes, and I seconded.
Is there any, is there any discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yep. Can't wait to see what it looks like.
Yeah, me too.
All right, we are now in workshop mode?
No, one more.
What?
Jeffrey Groves?
Oh, sorry. Jeffrey Groves is the next one. There you go. Lou, come on down.
Dan.
Yes.
Hello again.
Hello again, long time no see. Can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing for Jeffrey Groves?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much.
Evening again. This is a motion to extend the time within which we can complete construction. At the last meeting, Mr. Trubis, our neighbor, came by and mentioned some situation and problems that he had and hopefully we've resolved that. I think Mr. Trubis is here tonight, maybe he can address...
Yeah, John Trubis, living in St. Petersburg, the, my property adjoins the Jeffrey Groves Estate property. At the last meeting, I had voiced an objection to you providing them with the extension. I have subsequently met with some members of the board. Thank you for your assistance and Don Westermyer was there too and some people from Jeffrey Groves Estate. To make a long story short, we ironed everything out. They came up with a solution which I find satisfactory. Consequently, I hereby rescind my objection to you providing them with the requested extension.
I just love when we can all get together and address the situation. Don't start singing though, please.
My hearing's not too good.
I know.
Nothing.
That is good to hear.
Yes, that is very good to hear. But there are, there may be some other issues.
Yeah, take it easy on the shirt.
Not related to the neighbor, right?
Well, it, it still has to do with the neighbor.
Okay.
I understand that we've sent a surveyor out to confirm the...
Oh, yes.
... disturbance, because if the project now extends beyond the project site, we will have to think about whether we need an easement from your property and maintenance easement so that they can maintain...
Well, in fact, I, I met the surveyor a week ago today. Guy's name was John. He was there to take a topography survey. Yesterday, I met with George Brandt and Brian Carroll, right, the project manager, and at the site and we ironed everything out about the fence, the property line. As far as I'm concerned, everything's fine.
Right, but now that we're involved, we need to understand how the project is going to extend onto your property. So we have to get the survey back.
Right, right.
The survey's going to show what the bounds of disturbance are and then if, if they need an easement or anything from you, we'll make sure that that happens as part of the project.
Oh, well, they're of course going to be going onto my property to repair the damage that was done, but as far as their own project, I don't anticipate there's any reason why they would need to come onto my property for them to continue the Jeffrey Groves Estate project.
Hopefully that's what the survey will show.
Right. Yeah, so once we get the results of the survey, then we'll know from the town's perspective if everything has been, what's a copacetic, right? Thank you.
Or if we need, if we need something else.
Right, right.
Great, yes, and I anticipate that once everything is agreeable from you folks, in, within 30 days, George Brandt has told me they should be able to complete any repairs to my property.
Well, I'm, I'm thrilled to hear that you have found resolution with, with your issues because it was not, it was not fun to hear all that last, last time.
Yeah, well...
But again, once, once everybody sits down and you get the right people, I'm always happy to see a happy neighbor.
Yes, well, thank you folks for your cooperation and your participation and if Don were here, I'd be thanking him too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Lou, do you have anything?
No, actually, I was a little surprised as you were at the last meeting. Had I known about it before, it would have been resolved before the first, last meeting. I'm glad that Mr. Trubis is satisfied with the actions we've taken. I don't believe you'll find that we have extended beyond the limits of disturbance, but at this point, I assume you'll want your survey. We will be reinstalling a fence along the boundary line, establishing the boundary line. So there are some safety features that we've added at the request of the town engineer. So I think you will find the resolution satisfactory and, you know, we, but to keep going.
And then we can break out in song, right?
Right, there you go, kumbaya, right, yeah, there you go.
We'll wait for that.
Yeah. You don't want to hear me sing, believe me.
Do you expect to get the survey?
I'll find out. I, I didn't realize that you were waiting to see that. I did not realize that there was, the town was now concerned we were gone beyond the limits of the boundary of our property, so I will assure you that that will happen quick. What?
I said, I think we talked about that at the last meeting, but I know you were getting a lot of information at that time.
No, you asked me to determine the limits of the disturbance. I didn't know that that meant you wanted a survey, to that effect.
If you could share that with us, that would be great, yes.
So I will take care of that. When you will get the survey is as soon as I can inspire my surveyor to do the work, which is pretty good. He's a pretty good guy.
That would be great, thank you. Pete, do you have any comments on this?
No, I wasn't, I was on vacation and other folks from my office were out there and they updated me, so I'll continue any coordination with Tad, and we'll take care of it.
Thank you. Thank you. And no comments, Bonnie. Victoria, do you have anything else to... Tad, do you have any comments on this one? Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this application? Okay. Mr. Veeth, do you have any comments?
I'm glad you've resolved it, and thank you very much.
Mr. Waters?
No, just happy that it's all settled, thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Nothing else to add, thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Nothing.
All right, so, we're all, we're all happy now.
Okay, that's a good thing.
But, we're going to wait until we get the results of the survey, so we can then go back to the original...
Okay, so, would you put this on for July 19th? I'm confident that we would have something before you, before then, and then you could, you know, hopefully the board would see fit to pass a resolution at that point to extend the right to complete the project.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn the public hearing to July 19th?
Surprisingly, I will be there that night, so...
Can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to July 19th?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, now we go into workshop. Verizon Wireless Tower, for the 9G area.
Do we need to hold to get him on?
Oh.
And Bill Johnson's going to be joining us on...
Okay. Oh, great.
Take a second.
Yep.
This is fun.
Yeah. Except there's just a singular person there. Whoa. Wow. And that looks like, that looks like Bill. Oops.
There he is.
There he is.
You might be muted, Bill.
Ah, there you are.
To infinity.
Never seen that before.
It looks almost like a feedback loop. Oh, you're on mute. Bill?
I'll open my mic. Looks like somehow that's causing a problem in the screen.
But we can hear you.
But, yeah, hearing you is better, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Great. I was able to hear.
Okay, you're just going to hear yourselves and a little echo from Verizon, but...
We'll get used to it. So Scott, give us an update?
Sure. Good evening, Scott Olson.
Should we mute the TV until Bill Johnson's ready to talk?
That would be a pretty good idea.
Yeah, that would be good.
Definitely throwing me off.
Okay.
All right, good evening, Scott Olson, on behalf of Verizon Wireless. So, since the last meeting, I think it was in March or so, we submitted some additional information. I think the most important thing that the board wanted, there's a couple of things, but was that inventory report. So, we put together something to try to show why going two miles in either direction of the site just wouldn't work. Basically, we have existing sites that are a mile and a third away or so, so to go further, it wouldn't cover this area, because those sites that are a mile and a third away don't cover this area. So, hopefully, the way it was presented makes sense. Took a little while to figure out how to actually format it, but you have that before you. I think you have a revised radio frequency justification, probably why Mr. Johnson is on tonight, and other than that, we feel like the comments overall have been significantly whittled down. I do have Bonnie's comments, and I'm happy to discuss those later if the board would like. At the end, hopefully, I see that there's actually a resolution here for a secret lead agency and referral to the county. That's one of the, two of the things I was going to ask for. The third thing I would hopefully ask for is if we can get a public hearing scheduled after we go through our discussion tonight, so... But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Want we just start with Bonnie?
Sure, so as Mr. Olson mentioned, a public hearing is required, so at some point, we'll have to initiate that process. It is subject to GMO review, and we believe it's ready to go. One of the items that's still open, as per the applicant, is that they have been in consultation with DEC about the Blandings Turtle, so I think you're still waiting to hear back from them.
Yeah, I don't have an answer, we don't have an answer yet.
Okay.
But I'll follow up again before the week is out to see when we're going to get the answer.
Okay.
Again, we've encountered the Blandings, Blandings Turtle before. We're going to do whatever DEC tells us to do, but it's never been a project that would kill a, there's never been an issue that would kill a project. It just have, we have to get their recommendation.
Right, and you do have the protection plan built in, so, you know...
Yes.
That'll probably address it. There was a request at the pre-meeting that we just reconfirmed that DCWWA is not interested in co-location, so we did get that letter today, so no co-location, and I think that was really the only potential viable...
Yeah, we were just looking for documentation to close that loop.
Yeah.
Because the prior documentation really only said no tow, no, no, no construction of a tower, so we just wanted to make sure we had closed the option of the co-location.
Understood, understood, and I'm glad they didn't change their mind, because I was ready to say, wait a minute, that's going to be an issue if they now want us to go out there.
Yeah.
That happens, and it's, it's probably...
Well, I know I learned a lot to find out that they actually don't like them on there anymore. It's a maintenance nightmare.
We prefer not to be on water tanks. We go on water tanks, because we know the municipalities like them, but it's a maintenance pain in the neck, from what I'm told.
When I spoke to Jonathan, their concerns are, even with existing co-locations, sometimes personnel go in to maintain, the gates are left unlocked, kids can go climbing on these towers if they're unlocked and not secure, so it, chipping of the paint on the tower, and that's a substantial cost to repaint. So, he said, for all those reasons, they really are not big fans of using their towers.
Is that how the water towers get the big peace symbols printed on them?
Yes. He said it's to repaint the tanks like a $3 million...
Gosh.
...cost item, so, yeah, so they're not big fans of, again, these co-locations that would mark things up.
I, again, I appreciate just having the documentation and the paperwork, so we can close that out.
Sure.
So, again, we're down to really minor comments from our perspective. I think one of the open items for the planning board, and don't have to decide this this evening, but in opening up a little bit the canopy and the underbrush with the driveway going in, is there any need to put in a fence with any screening slats or landscaping, you know, either on the St. Andrews side or on the backside? And I think that's a matter of the planning board, kind of really looking at the site and determining whether you think screening is necessary. So, I just raise it, because I think we have to come, again, to consensus, but I think we have a little time, if we still have to have a public hearing, to make that determination. And... Visual resources, I did point out to the board that you did revise a couple of the images, so that the board could see what the tower would look like with all the co-locations on it, and that's sort of the worst-case visual. And they did that, and I pointed out the particular pages where that was shown, so that's just for disclosure and information, but you did supply that at the request of the planning board, so those are our comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Pete?
There's not really many engineering issues, you know, on this. I am going to take a look at the grading and erosion control, but, you know, I will do that. It's probably not going to be an issue. It's minor compared to some of the other things you've been talking about, so...
Okay. Ms. Polidaro?
We have a resolution prepared to classify it as an unlisted action tonight, refer to county planning, and the board, we are at a point where the board can set a hearing if it so chooses.
Mr. Johnson, do you have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry, hold on, hold on one moment while we unmute on our side.
Okay.
Oh, I was just looking for him coming up, he's over there.
We can hear you now.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me join in with you tonight. Most recently, the report that I submitted to you was the end of May, and there were a couple of open items, some of which had been resolved, and maybe tonight, we can get a little clarification on one of them. But, there was an alternative site that was dismissed by the RF engineer at Verizon, and I had asked if you could please provide documentation as to why that site was dismissed on that, and that's been entered into the record in the post, let's see, March, March submission of that, if the issue was revised, engineering necessity case document. So, the T-Rex Hyde Park site, that was referenced in the original application materials, and is definitely not a viable project. I had asked in the preliminary report that we do a height analysis, 156 feet, 146 feet, and 136 feet antenna centerline. Those are four feet below the heights of the tower. So, for example, the 146 antenna centerline corresponds to the proposed 150-foot tower. The antenna panel's about eight feet long, so four foot to center of the antenna, where the rating frequency engineers do their propagation plots. So, that was provided back in March, and there, my conclusion, looking at those plots, is that there certainly are coverage gaps that exist at lower elevations of 136 feet antenna centerline in particular. The RF engineer noted that there were certain areas that were, he designated them as focus areas. It was not clear to me that the focus areas were areas that perhaps had been identified by Verizon using some criteria which was not disclosed, and why those areas need to be covered, or perhaps they were just areas where the RF engineer wanted to highlight, so the board could see this, where the coverage gaps had occurred. I'll just add at this point that every site has coverage gaps. You know, RF engineers don't expect to have complete ubiquitous coverage above threshold everywhere, and that's why multiple cells are put in, is to cover areas that are important and need to be covered if the main site can't provide that type of coverage. So, my question to Mr. Olson and to his RF engineer is, were those focus areas defined by criteria, or are they merely being identified on the plots as being areas where gaps start to develop as the tower height is reduced? The, where we're going with this is that if those were established by a criteria, we need to know what that criteria would be, but if they were merely looking at the plot and saying, here is a gap that's developing, the question I think the board would have is that, is it really necessary to cover that particular area? Because sometimes gaps form in areas where there really is nobody. I mean, it might be a valley, it might be an area where no roadway passes through, it might be no houses, no expectation that anybody would ever want to use their cell phone in that area. And if that's true, those particular focus areas, then I think we need to have some additional conversation about whether or not 150 feet for the tower, 146-foot antenna centerline, is truly necessary. So, that's really the intent of my finding, one of the findings in the most recent report. I think the last couple of points were a question about FAA marking and lighting requirements, that this tower falls below 200 feet, so normally it would be excluded from FAA marking and lighting. I'm not sure that there was an analysis that would ensure that we're not in proximity to any runways that require that type of lighting at a lower height. I suspect that's not the case, but just to complete, I just wanted to ask that particular question. There may have been another quick, I'm going to be a little bit ahead of the word. I, I, I think, I think that was, that was the, although, yeah, the very last point is really not something that more and more the applicant can do anything about. There is a FCC regulation, it's 47 CFR, section 1.6100, and that's a new provision that's been added by the FCC in the last few years, that allows an existing structure, a consistent tower in this case, to be extended by a fixed amount, 20 feet or 10%, whichever is larger. And the board should understand that if a valid request comes forward for this tower at whatever height it's approved at, pretty much it's a done deal to extend that, it's an eligible request. Unless there's significant change in the visual or other issues that surround that tower, it may be something that the boards and the municipal would have to approve. Once that's done one time, that's it. After that, you have to come before the planning board and zoning board, and deal perhaps to get the additional extension on the tower. But I just wanted the board to be aware of that, that that provision is in place, and that's true for all towers everywhere in the United States, to get that type of extension. That was by the FCC to try to facilitate the deployment of wireless infrastructure. So, at that point, I'll take breath and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Bill, I appreciate that. So, I don't know if you want to address those now?
Well, the focus areas, I'm not sure what the answer is to that, but, our, thank you. The RF engineer for Verizon did prepare a draft response, but because it wasn't going to be submitted in time for this meeting, I never got a chance to go and review it. So, but what I will say is, even if, without knowing what his answer is, though, even if there are gaps in areas that are not population centers, we still try to cover those areas. And as a hiker, a hunter, I know when I'm out in the woods, I want cell service, and so Verizon takes the attitude of, we also want to have cell service, you know, everywhere. We want to make it as ubiquitous as possible. Mr. Johnson's correct, it always can't be that way. But I will get the answer for you in terms of what the, what he was referring to when he referred to the focus areas. And in terms of the FAA, we do not, no, we are below 200 feet, and we do not believe we are within any airport runway that would allow us or require us to mark or light the tower. Our regulatory department always goes through that process internally before we do any type of a new tower build.
So, what can you give us to show that?
I could probably do like what they call, it's a third-party toe air analysis. It's not going to be the FAA, because we don't have to submit anything to the FAA, so I'll see if I can do that for you.
Scott, to what extent does helicopters, hospitals, any of that come into play? Would you possibly need a light?
You know, that really is more of a local issue, and I was in another municipality not too far away, where they have an active helicopter patrol for a reservoir, and we didn't know about it. It's not an airport or anything, it's not, I don't think there are flight plans filed, but the point is, we didn't know about it, the municipality said, hey, you want to think about this, and they actually said, we want to light. And we said, okay, but when people, you know, people get upset about it, you're, we're not saying, we're, do what you have to do, but that's more of a local issue, we feel.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And what about this new FCC provision?
Not really new, it's been out there for eight, no, it's been out there for nine years. It was a part of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act in 2012, and as politics go, things get added, so this was added to that. But yes, it's, it's, it's well-known within the industry that in order to foster the development and co-location of these types of facilities, the, well, basically, Congress and the president signed into law this provision that says, if a carrier is trying to co-locate on an existing tower, and you're not going to substantially change the height of that tower, which as Mr. Johnson said, is basically 20 feet or 10%, the greater of, the law actually says the municipality has to approve it, and it has to be approved within 60 days. That's the law, because they want to foster co-location, and they want the network to be developed. Now, there are some exceptions. If you had an existing tree tower, and we were going to change it, and it was going to change the concealment... to change the concealment such that it kind of took away from what the original concealment was, then that's an exception from that requirement. So there are a few exceptions, but generally, no, Mr. Johnson is absolutely correct.
Okay. So we'll be getting this, the engineering report from your RF engineer?
Yes.
And that should close that gap?
I believe it will. And if it's okay, if there are any questions that Mr. Johnson has, he's free to talk to RF engineer, and they can go back and forth and resolve if there are any issues.
Hold on one moment, we, Bill is trying to talk. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, my question was, is that acceptable to report if Verizon's RF engineer and I communicate directly to try to resolve any issues that come up? Do you have a next time repeat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, we need to consider if this application is now considered complete?
Complete enough to send to the county, yes.
Complete enough to classify and circulate?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's see where I am at. So in public hearing mode, I'm like, I need to close something? All right, so, Mr. Waters, if you could read the resolution that classifies the action?
Yes. Resolution classifying action under SEACR and referring application to County Department of Planning and Development, Verizon Cell Tower, St. Andrews. Resolution 2022-52, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under SEACR. Two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project and directs its secretary to send notice of its intent to all involved and interested agencies. And three, directs its secretary to refer the site plan to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239-M of the general municipal law.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The list of involved and interested agencies, there's five of them. And Cynthia, do you have a list that you can give them, right, what we need for circulation?
Yep.
It's New York State DEC, Town of Hyde Park Town Board, the Dutchess County Legislature, the Dutchess County Department of Public Works, and Roosevelt Fire District.
Cat has a direct.
Okay, good. Do we want to talk about setting a public hearing? And if we do, for when?
It would have to be July 19th or after.
Right. And we still need to circulate, so, how's August looking?
Hot.
Yeah. Usually.
Probably.
Usually, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been a weird year, though.
It'd be twice in August?
We do.
First meeting's the second.
Second? Sure, can we get placed on the second agenda?
The second.
Sorry, the August 2nd agenda.
On the August 2nd agenda. Can I have a motion to set the public hearing for August 2nd?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you. And Bill, thank you so much for zooming in.
Thank you, Bill.
Nice to know we have the technology.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Safe ride home.
Thank you.
Next up is the Winnicke Land Trust Lot Line Alteration.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, please speak into the microphone.
Absolutely.
Just for the record, you are?
I am John Heidecker with Heidecker Lancer Bank, representing Winnicke Land Trust.
Great. So, we've received the revised plot on May 30th. I'm trying to, I'm sorry, I'm like, there were, there were a bunch of questions about, but I believe we've worked through a lot of them, the Clinton.
Yes, we had a meeting with Clinton last night, and they aren't interested in moving forward with an application. And they said to connect the planning board secretaries via email to discuss, I guess, or whatever you guys need for that, but.
Mr. Heidecker, did you say they are or aren't?
They are not requiring an application.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
But they'll still need to sign it, so.
Okay. Yes, we made some changes to the map based on the consultant's comments from last time. I have communication from TAD for redoing our density calculation, which we are going to do. And also there, we have to cite the correct chapter in the zoning code for the disturbance along the streams.
And you said that that's still yet to be done?
Those two items still need to be done, yes.
All right. We do have a resolution tonight to classify and accept for sketch and to do the referral to Clinton and DPW. So, we should still be able to do that, right?
We can still do that. And if you look at the resolution, it actually, item four accepts the sketch plan and then identifies that they'll need to correct those two items for the final plot.
Oh, okay, great.
So it lays it out right for them.
Built right in there, right. Pete, do you have any?
No, any of our comments were addressed with the latest submission.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent. Tad, do you have any comments on this?
Already submitted.
Okay. Victoria, any additional comments?
No.
Great. Mr. Gersio, any comments on this?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mr. V?
No comments.
Okay. So, who has this resolution?
I do.
Ah, John, thank you.
Resolution to classify the action except for sketch Winnicke line alteration dated June 7, 2023, resolution 2023-19. Whereas the applicant went to land just to submit a application to alter the lot lines between 69.096 acre lot and a 90.51 acre lot to create a new 154.17 acre lot and a new five-acre parcel located at 991-995 North Wicker Lane in the Green Belzoni District. And whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type 2 SEACR action. Two, classifies the project as a minor subdivision pursuant to Section 96-4 of the subdivision law. Three, directs its secretary undertake a courtesy referral to the Town of Clinton and Dutchess County Department of Public Works. Four, accepts the sketch plan in accordance with Section 96-12C of the subdivision law and requests the following information to be added to the final plot. A, corrected stream corridor reference, and B, corrected average density calculation. Be it further resolved prior to submitting a final plot, that the applicant shall confer with Dutchess County Department of Public Works regarding the proposed public access to proposed parcel B.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There you go. We're off and running.
All right.
Do you want to set a public hearing tonight?
I was going to say, we're probably at that point where we could set a public hearing. What's that?
Do we have an application for final yet?
Oh.
No, we don't.
No, we don't. So.
Set a public hearing for it.
Okay. Add that to your to-do list.
It's added right now.
We can set the hearing at the next meeting.
Yep.
Right.
If you get your application in.
Okay. All right, we'll get it right in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next up is the Bellfield Phase 2 Final Development Plan.
Anne?
Talking about the site design.
Yes. I think I can leave. I don't, you know, the signed manual is not really in my court, and I think it's just small, O'Malley's an extension, right?
Yep. All right.
Not that I really want to leave everybody, but you know.
Come on, you want to just hang out, right? No, you're fine.
I don't, no, we're just talking about the site. I don't know, are we talking about the SWIP?
For?
Well, it's on the agenda. I mean, we got it, we're like reviewing it, we've been coordinating with the applicant, and we're in the, we're in the process of looking at a revised submission that we just got.
Right, but I don't think it's here. Right? The SWIP.
Can you get one? Tad, she's got a copy.
Tad, you know, is getting, I don't know, she may have like gotten a copy today.
Yeah, she has a copy.
Ah, June 6th, okay.
So we're reviewing it now and coordinating with the applicant. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
And you're sticking to it, okay. And you're sticking to it.
Thank you, Pete, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Enjoy your evening. Okay.
We all set?
I think we are all set.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. Just to kind of review, so we did receive site plan approval with conditions on Phase 2. We had six conditions. One of the conditions, of course, was getting the SWIP approved. And Pastrow has been working with Pete on making that happen. The other condition, of course, is the signage plan, which we're going to talk about tonight. We've had the signage plan in front of this, or the manual in front of this board several times, and we've, Grace has addressed the comments. We met last week kind of offline to look at the details of the text, and Grace will present that tonight, and you have that in front of you. The utility plan, we already submitted, and I believe Pete did basically respond that he's satisfied with it, so that is done. That was one of the six conditions. The last condition, number six, had a bunch of attachments to it. One of it included a rec fee. That rec fee, we're coordinating and getting it, getting the check cut and prepared and ready to submit. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Grace to review the plans, signage manual that you have in front of you. I'm sorry, there's only one here.
Thank you, Larry.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Since our last offline meeting, I love that term, we did make some changes to the first few pages. We had added in the procedures for permits. So if, shall I read them? Have you had a chance to, page two?
I would just talk about the changes because I know I have not had a chance to review this. So if you could kind of touch on what, how your discussion played into this, that would be great.
Sure, of course. We needed to determine exactly what the tenant would need to do to get their sign permitted and make sure that TAD was able to issue them a permit for their sign. So we have talked about the fact that they need a permit. We have created a signage checklist for that permit based on your signed permit, and that is the last appendix, the last page. And we have also given the planning board, upon the referral by the zoning administrator, the ability to evaluate the request, consider all the relevant circumstances, and basically to give them a variance to what the code is allowing. So, that text is in there now. I know that was important to everyone.
This gives us, that gives this board the ability to give approvals, right?
Right, exactly. To anything that doesn't exactly follow.
Right.
Yes. Everything else has pretty much stayed the same. We have the pad site guidelines again that we had added. I think you folks have all seen our description of the primary wall signs, those details. I did add the measurements to page nine for the blade sign.
Okay. Thank you.
We took the map that was on page 11 and made it the 11-by-17 fold-out so that it's more legible.
Thank you.
And any sign indicated on there is now not in the buffer.
Ah, okay. Oh, that's nice.
And then those signs are described in the next pages. We've discussed the entrance barn and the size of the letters that is.
It looks like there's been a big change.
There was a correction to the math.
Thank you, because you know, as I, I was looking at it, at the old design manual, I'm like, first of all, the guy who's standing there in your little rendering, I'm like, that's.
It didn't look right.
Yes.
It didn't look right, yeah, yeah. Okay, so that was like a calculation.
I absolutely own that one.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Well, I'm sure Chairman Dupree was very happy.
Oh, he was ecstatic.
Three foot four was so much. Thank you, that's great. And I believe.
I don't know.
So from the first time we saw this, this is now, this now has all the, you know, a lot of the detail that we need. I'm going to, I can't say all of it because there could be something missing, but, I mean, just from that first night to this, it's, the amount of detail now that describes everything, again, it just, we're looking for a way to approve things without going, well, did they really mean this or what? So all of the detail is, it's probably, we'll save lots and lots and lots of time down the road.
Basically, piggyback off that, and I feel like we're making a sign code for a town within a town. So it's really cool that you guys have spent so much time to develop this, you know, in my opinion, relatively comprehensive sign code package for Bellfield, and you did a really tasteful job with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
It wouldn't be a night without me talking. So, thank you. I just want to kind of piggyback on what you had indicated. We're obviously very anxious to try to have this sign manual approved. As Larry had said, there were several conditions, we've gone over those numerous times, and I think all of them at this point have been addressed. The SWIP is moving, the utility plan is done, the check is being cut. The last remaining item is the sign manual. And just a reminder is, this is the guideline, so this is like the town code for, as you said, Mr. Oliver, this is the code for how signs are approved. And we think that this really represents the last of, hopefully, the comments. We understand that you had just gotten this tonight, but there were very insignificant changes, I think, that were made between the last iteration and this iteration. We're really asking the board if you would consider approving this tonight so that we could move forward and try to have these plans signed. We're kind of in holding pattern on being able to move forward with financing and signing leases and so forth, so it's very important to us. So we're hoping that you would consider reviewing this, given the, you know, minimal changes that we had between the last meeting and this meeting. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I've been attentive to this, and I think it addresses all the concerns that were asked, so it's sort of asked and answered at this point.
Yes, I don't doubt that this is the culmination of all those meetings, but I don't know that we are prepared tonight to actually be able to do that. Again, we, as you know, even if this is completely, complete, we still need time to review it and just, just make sure. So with, you know, I understand, I understand the need, believe me. So, with, you know, I understand, I understand the need, believe me. But I would ask Victoria, so, and what are we looking for?
I mean, obviously it's the board's...
We're talking about conditions, right? So, how do, how do those go back getting satisfied?
So, this was a unique hybrid resolution. Usually, conditions are just handled by the zoning administrator without the need to come back to the planning board.
Yep.
This particular approval did require them to come back to the planning board on a few items, and this is the last remaining planning board item.
Correct.
We already worked out the other one.
Right.
So, the SWIP, though, still has to be approved, so that's still not...
No, no, the SWIP, the SWIP doesn't...
Right, but it's not by the planning board, but Pete, that was the piece that Pete is, and his office are reviewing now.
Yeah.
So, that condition is not done yet, but it's in progress.
Pretty close, yep, we're pretty...
It could be done without the...
The planning board, yeah, the planning board review.
I mean, I hear you, the, I haven't, we just got this, this afternoon.
We understand, but we just got the comments, that was the problem, is we just got the comments last week, so we were trying to address them.
It's all lightning fast, I mean...
It is. And I think what Victoria is indicating is that this is just meeting a condition of a already approved, of an approval.
That's why I was asking, because we don't usually...
You don't usually, you don't usually do it.
Right.
And I know that they're putting, I mean, what is the timeline that you're working under? Is there, it just, it's hard, it's hard for me to recommend that the board move forward when I haven't read it, because you could have thrown something crazy in here, like, you know, no permits acquired, and then all of a sudden, not...
So...
Not that you did, but it's...
Could be a typo.
We have to do our diligence, and so, is this a situation where perhaps, I mean, what is your timing? Can we talk about a special meeting?
Sure, yeah, I mean, we could absolutely talk about a special meeting. I mean, the alternative is that, you know, can we move to the next meeting where there are no additional comments that come in at the end, and there's nothing else that, you know, that we can really adequately say that this is the final sign manual and move forward with whatever, I don't know what the form is, a resolution.
I think the board would, we'd do a quick resolution, just saying that the attached sign manual is hereby approved by the planning board.
And satisfy the conditions, right?
Victoria, is it possible that we could agree on accepting the sign manual upon your review for the legal verbiage, or, you know, because the sign code actually didn't change?
That's kind of conditioning a condition, because this is a condition.
Well, but it's not unlike, actually, what the planning board often does is they accept a set of plans, and they say, "We're going to give you approval tonight, and so we just need it to be reviewed by the towns consultants," and so...
It's not just me, it's Tad also.
Yeah.
We just need to, so what, I mean, this is great. I see that they've included an application sheet.
Correct.
And I think this is really going to be very useful, but I just want Tad to look at it to make sure that it covered everything that she would want to see in her application.
So, again, when we talk about timelines, and we talk about a potential special meeting, because we will meet again in two weeks.
21st.
No. Yeah, yeah, June 21st.
Yes. Yeah, in two weeks.
And so...
To Kelly's point, when we come on the 21st...
Can you use the...
Yes.
Please?
We, I'm sorry, when we come on the 21st, we like to get it wrapped up, so any comments that we can get, or maybe have another offline minute to wrap it up, to be done, that's what we're after.
Okay.
So, if we had questions, who do we submit them to?
They go through, I think to Tad.
To Tad.
Yeah, they go to Cynthia.
But the issue is, sorry, I'm yelling loud.
Here you go.
The issue is that, and, you know...
We think that there were very minimal comments between the last iteration and this iteration, and I'm sure that you had reviewed the last iteration, so it shouldn't be a heavy lift to review this. We're just asking that, you know, the meeting is on a Wednesday, and so if we get comments on that Friday, it's, you know, which is next week. And so, we really need to get, you know, we're asking that we get comments back almost this week, or, you know, by Monday or something like that, so that we can turn something around.
I think we can ask that we expedite our review.
Yes.
I am out of town, starting tomorrow morning at like 5:00 a.m., and I won't be back until next Wednesday. So, I don't think I'm going to be able to review this, and I have a question to work out with Victoria. So, I, I'm not thinking it's going to be the end of the week.
I think at this point, I'm, sorry, I don't want to suggest something otherwise, but at this point, you have, I know you've reviewed this manual, and there were some minor comments that Grace had made.
I haven't read what came in today.
Yes, but what I'm suggesting is that the things that came in today were mostly text changes. I mean, can we leave that to, I don't want to, you know, give that to someone else, but can we leave that to Victoria, or perhaps Bonnie, or someone that can review? Because if you're back on Wednesday, we get comments on Thursday, we're trying to scramble on Friday, and we're coming to the planning board meeting on the 21st, and you say the same thing, we just got the documents.
What, one thing that wasn't discussed in your, was that you had removed the West Dorsey, I believe?
Yes, we did.
Sign in that encroachment.
Correct, that's been removed.
So, I mean, I don't know if everybody here knows that.
Didn't know, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's important.
I noticed it in the...
Yeah, they took that wall out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it's technically classified as a structure.
As a structure, right.
Yeah, that's been removed.
Yep, so they did do that, too.
I mean, I think, I don't want to put words in Grace's mouth, but I think that most of the changes that were indicated to us at this onsite meeting that we had, this offline meeting, were text amendments.
Right, and I think we're all in agreement that they probably are. If we need, and we do need Tad to be very comfortable with this, so... And they're discussing, so I'm going to let them discuss.
I'll be patient, yeah.
It could be...
It could be good, need like a drum roll.
Just give them, give them space, a few minutes.
I've raised four kids, right? Work it out.
Were there any other substantive ones? That's a big one, to take out the...
It was big, and I apologize for that oversight, but other than adding the permit form, you know, and the map?
And the map, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, map has gotten a lot more detail.
Detail on the map.
And stretch that, yeah.
And of course, the measurements have been...
The measurements, yes, yeah. And defining the process.
Yes.
Yes, I would say that that's a fair assessment, is that it was corrected.
You know, I mean, it's, probably the only thing that is probably really new is the...
Correct. Which it's, by the way, it's your form, you know, so it's, it's really, it's the town's form with the Bellfield logo.
Yeah, with the fold-out, I think the question was at our meeting, was that we wanted to see the second, that northern entry.
Yes.
And that you have provided that now, so that we can see the whole phase, basically.
Yeah, and the guidelines...
Yeah.
Yeah. Pretty straightforward.
Exactly. And I like how you add the procedure, so tenants, everybody knows what the process is.
Crystal clear, yes, yeah.
Yep, and under what...
What I do like about it, too, is that the tenant comes to us, Bellfield, Bellfield's got to sign off on it first before it goes... And as you're getting tenants, you can give them this.
Yes.
And then they know what they're getting, and it just alleviates any...
They'll probably even get that before they sign...
It's probably a part of the lease or something, but, you know, that's the nice part about it. Usually, tenants go to the town and they look at the code, but now this is the code.
Right, right. I can see that in your prospective tenant package, almost.
Yes, of course.
Knowing how important that is.
It helps streamline it, something from dropping off.
Of course.
And not meeting a certain time for you.
We often have tenants that, you know, I represent, obviously applicants that own property in the town, and, you know, the town will call me and say, "Oh, one of your tenants dropped off an application," and we, representing the landlord, don't even know. So, this is nice that they have that control. You know, helps kind of minimize the time that the town has to spend on saying, "Oh, this doesn't meet our guidelines."
Right.
And we're already making sure it meets the guidelines.
Yes, correct, yeah.
Did you guys discuss anything good over there?
I mean, I...
I think the bottom line is we can't do anything tonight. We, we're all going to feel much more comfortable when Tad says, "This, this is what I was..."
I don't see any reason why this could not, by the board can't do their final comments, and we can't get final comments in time for approval on the 21st, but...
Right, right, well, I mean, we all are very aware that the 21st is your, is your goal. And, you know, the consultants are...
So, that would mean that, you know, we would have to try to get comments by Friday next week, and then Grace would have to turn them around. So, we're coming back to the board with documents, you know, you're getting them one or two days before, and we just don't want to get into the situation that we keep getting into, which is we're shorted on time.
One or two days before is very different than the afternoon of.
Totally agree.
And if you say on page 10, "We changed this to that," and on page 5, "We changed this word." You know, that would help us...
Maybe send a digital red line.
Right, right.
We can, I mean, I can do a tight turnaround, I just couldn't, I can't do night of. I mean, as far as getting the resolution and...
I understand that, I think it's hard on, it's hard on us, too, because we keep getting comments later, and we can't respond quick enough to get...
I feel like we're in a different space now. I feel like the offline meeting last week and what you've done, now it really is looking to make sure nothing got misspelled.
Okay.
I mean, that's my feel, and I, we're looking to confirm that. And if there are, get you the, like I said, very detailed comments, and you return, say yes.
So, perhaps maybe the board can collectively get them to us early, you know, we can get yours earlier, and then we'll wait for Tad's at the end. Okay, we can start making changes. I'm not sure what form, Victoria, this resolution has to be, and...
I think it's going to be a very basic, short resolution, and I, we will have the final version attached to it.
Perfect.
There's no question what the final version is.
So, what we'll do is the final version will date June 21st.
Fine.
So, that'll be the new date on it.
And the resolution then...
The work will not be on the SWIP on my part, it'll be on the signage manual.
Well, I think that...
Because it's not going to be more than two days.
Yeah, I mean, I can't manage your workload, but I think that, you know, we've been trying to get the SWIP finished and so forth, and Pete, I think, is articulating many of your comments, so I don't...
Pete doesn't have any of my comments, we have not spoken at all about any of the review of the SWIP. And I'm going through, reading the text, I've got questions, I don't see, I need to work through Pete.
So, I think ultimately for the SWIP, you don't have to come back to the board, per se.
We don't have to come back to the board, yeah.
So, we should just focus on the sign manual, and then that should be...
The way that we look at it is, unfortunately, the next meeting after the 21st isn't until July 19th, yeah, and so that's...
So, I think the priority is the sign manual, and then after that, Tad can focus on the SWIP.
Right, right, so, so the 21st, the resolution is not only on the sign manual, but the other utility plan.
Oh, right, I think the board accepted it already, but we can...
But I don't think we have the resolution.
That's fine.
So, as long as we have that. And then, and then the outstanding item would be, of course, the SWIP.
The last plan, yes, I have it.
The, once, once this is signed, then that paves a way for us submitting 2A.
Which will be a piece of cake.
Everybody's very, everybody's very excited about seeing what 2A looks like, right?
Right, so, I think we have a plan here to...
Yes.
To get you what you need, we all understand...
Yeah.
The timing.
Okay, very good.
So, I appreciate your...
All right, very well, thank you.
Your patience.
I don't know if you have the electronic version of this, were we able, yes, okay, so it was sent to me. It probably came in late, so...
Send it to me second.
Perfect, and that can get disseminated, so you all have an electronic version as well, it's now you have paper copies.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your, all your work on this, and...
And thank you, thank you, the board, thank you, Tad, you, thank you.
Thank you for my...
Sure. Yeah, that'll be good.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for listening at the workshop.
Yeah.
Looks complete.
Thank you. Okay, I think I saw that, yes. But we didn't, we didn't really need him, or?
No.
Okay. Our next, our next item on the agenda is a small O'Malley subdivision. They are looking for a 180-day extension of time to meet the conditions for the signature of final plat. Dan Kohler was not able to join us, but this is a pretty straightforward resolution. Are there any issues over, Tad, with the small O'Malley? No? Okay, good, thank you.
Resolution to grant site 180-day approval, small O'Malley subdivision, resolution number 2021-55C, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant two 90-day extensions of time, 180 days total, in which to satisfy the conditions of final plat approval, two and including December 18th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries?
And I think I'll excuse myself, I don't think you need to be for any of the other items.
Thank you, thank you for coming out, have a safe ride home.
Thank you. I won't.
Next item on the agenda is Keystone Fireworks. Thank you for your patience.
Ah, here he is. He's about ready to explode.
Yeah.
That's a dog beat for him.
Oh, no, now we're going to have two of them.
My name's Ed McMahon, I'm one of the road managers for Keystone. We had submitted the paperwork and the new plot, and what, where the tents are going, where the tent is going.
Right, you worked through like where the septic was, and you're avoiding that area.
If you have any questions or concerns, just let it go, come on.
Tad, any questions, or any comments on this, please? I think the applicant did a really good job of working with our office to come to a better location. I actually think it'll be more visible based on the break in the trees, and I appreciate you, I appreciate your efforts.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Great, and so, time's coming up, right? Right around the corner.
Yeah.
Victoria, did you have any comments on this one?
I don't...
Never mind, never mind, didn't even ask. And the building permit will need to be issued, too. Okay, okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
No. Okay, Mr. Veeth, I believe you have this.
Sure, Keystone Novelty Distributors LLC, 3999 Albany Post Road, site plan waiver, resolution 2023-34. Whereas a site plan waiver has been made to the Towne-High Park Planning Board by the property owner, John Azarian, on April 27th, 2023, for approvals as required to establish a temporary sales venue for sparkling devices, and whereas, 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 therefore be resolved that the Towne-High Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements for the proposed temporary change as submitted on April 27th, 2023, and, and on site plan drawing dated June 2nd, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, and...
Welcome.
Oh, yes, thank you, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Next up is the Woodpecker General Store. They are looking to paint the exterior of their building, which will look really nice. I thought the pictures looked very, very nice. Any comments on this?
No.
No? Mr. Gersio, if you could please read that.
Towne-High Park Planning Board, Woodpecker General Store, date June 7th, 2023, resolution 2023-35. Whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Towne-High Park Planning Board by the property owner Gerard Viterato and Kelly Winters on June 1st, 2023, for approval as required to repaint the building, and whereas, 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 therefore be resolved that the Towne-High Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed change as submitted on June 1st, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Susan Schreiber, she's looking for a recommendation for site plan waiver for replacement windows at 48 Fuller Lane, which is in the, is it in the SAS or the Historic Overlay District?
Yeah.
Yeah, Historic Overlay District. Who has this, oh, you have this one, thank you.
Susan Shriver, 48 Fuller Lane, site plan waiver, resolution number 2023-33. Whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Towne-Hite Park Planning Board by Susan Shriver for replacing 12 windows of the same size in the property associated with a single-family home requiring a building permit, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved, Towne-Hite Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, May 17th, 2023, and further request to the Planning Board dated June 1st, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Boba Tea signage. Oh, you've sat there the whole time, thank you so much. Do you want to come up and tell us about your business? Can you just speak into the microphone?
We are going to open a store for the Boba Tea, this is a drink store, so maybe we'll come with some little snack, and we won't cook, we don't, we won't have a fully kitchen in the store. We will do very simple drink, just like browning, use the hot water to browning. The store was a nail spa, which is located in Hite Park Mall. So we just list this store this year, February, and, and now we are just apply for the permit.
Well, that's exciting, we don't have anything like a Boba Tea.
Yeah, we, we... I'm sorry. We start February 28th, now takes not long, we won't know how long take like a building permit after this, not after this meeting.
Well, this will get you to the next, to the next...
So usually, stage is like after planning board meeting, and the next is a building permit, right?
Because I just graduate from the city, and my major is business, so it is my first time to operate a store, I am the partner of her, so everything first time.
Oh, that's great. Well, thank you for choosing Hite Park.
Thank you, this, this county is very friendly, the people are so nice.
Good, well, I wish you all the success, and I have to try a Boba Tea.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Any comments, Tad? We are trying to resolve a few signages on either side of theirs, and that's in the progress. And we're working on it, so I, and I do appreciate your signed permit coming, coming in and resolving the question about whether or not internally lit is allowed. Oh, good, good, okay, yes. It's not. Okay, so Mr. Veeth, you have one, and Mr. Waters, you have the other one.
Yes, so resolution recommending granting of sign permit, cozy Boba Tea, tenants panel sign, resolution 2023-32. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board recommends approve, approval of the sign permit for the cozy Boba Tea tenant panel sign.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next resolution, Mr. Waters.
Boba Tea wall sign, resolution 2023-32A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Towne-Hite Park Planning Board relaxes the standard letter height of 10 inches to 16 inches, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board recommends approval of the sign permit for the Boba Tea wall sign.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome to Hite Park, and I hope to see your new store very soon.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you for sitting through all that business.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We learned a lot today, we learned a lot.
That's business, right?
Yeah, first time, thank you, thank you.
Take care.
I do.
So I don't think there's anything else on the agenda.
No.
Can I have a motion for adjourn, to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, we...
We made it.
Did a good job there.
We made it.
Thank you, Tad, for all your work, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Where are you going, Tad?
Oh, Tad, you're not busy, you're taking vacations, right?